Dr. Dean?
Here.
Emma will not be here. Todd Spade?
Here.
Cindy? John?
Here.
Crystal? Here. Steve?
Here.
And Justin?
Here. Pledge of allegiance? All right, item two, let's see approval of the August 27th, 2024, regular council minutes.
And this is Crystal. I would move approval.
I don't second it.
Got a motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Host? All right. Item number three, council announcements. Any member of the council have anything they'd like to? Bring up?
Steve, um, it's fair week. Let's go out and support everybody at the fair. Have a good fair.
Sounds absolutely. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Item number four, first period for public comment.
Anybody online who wants to make public comment can do so at this time?
Hearing none, we'll move on to number five, which we're actually going to not do tonight. Scheduling issues, I think Tom can't be with us. We're going to move on to item number six, which is the Barocua Development Association Report, and Levon Felton's here. So if you can, yep, press the button with the little person on it.
Thank you. I appreciate you having me here. I'm Levon Felton, Faroqua Development Association. Try to periodically give, uh, give the council an update on what's been going on with VDA and, and, and whatnot. And I apologize. It's been a while since I've talked to you folks, but we'll blame it on COVID if that's okay. Well, yeah, that's what it is. No, I'm seriously though, we've had, um, and, and for there, I know there's some new members since I've, I've spoke to you folks, uh, real quickly. I just give you a, a rundown. VDA is Broke Development is an R and we serve at the pleasure of the council and of the mayor. We try to bring development, uh, bring people, businesses, jobs to Verona, to, to bring jobs tax base. And that's what we do. Uh, we've been around for probably 30, 40 years. And we, uh, have been, I think fairly successful at doing so. I, I have always called it a first response team. When someone comes to town and they're looking and maybe Nate will get ahold of me or, or one of the other members, the members are myself, uh, Tom Weston, Joe Vicmire, Mary Henry, Jacob Connas, Michael Core. Uh, and what we try to do is we try to get those people and get them engaged, show them what we have for properties available. What's in certain TIF six, TIC TIF seven, what's available, what we can try to do to core, not course, that's a bad word. Try to get them, uh, to come to Verona and maybe not go to another location and, and what we have to offer. So a lot of times what I'll do is I'll just grab them, throw them in the truck. Get a bag of cheese curds and a Pepsi and we drive around and I try to show them other things, you know, around in Verona too, that to get them excited about. You know, about the town, if they're not from here, and I've done a lot of that over the years. So, um, a, a good thing. It's sometimes hard for a counselor or a county board to react quickly to, uh, sometimes by the time you get to that person, you've lost, um, you know, the initiative, the initiative and, and you need to try to capture that. So, um, that's just a quick rundown of what, what it is, what we are, what we do. Um, things that were, that we've been working on, uh, uh, the, uh, business park. You got a couple of slides, don't you? I can show you what we have for land available. Working with the business park and this is a little different deal, right, Nate? This has got some rules that we have to abide by. Uh, different than the regular VDA owned property, but yet we are still working with this. There is a, there is a, um, uh, the county is also involved in this and we kind of share, they've, they've turned it over to us a little bit more, uh, in the last year or so, it's kind of letting us take lead on things that are going on out there. Uh, Sleepy Hollow Ford is out there. Uh, we did do a project, uh, the city was involved in that with some TIF two, where we did a, uh, uh, acre and a half, two acre, uh, prairie planning out there. That turned out really good. I've been working with, I believe, uh, David Cryer on that. We did get a bench and some, uh, they're doing some trails out there. It's actually really cool. So I, I want to say that then the city was actually involved in, in helping to, to make that happen. And then the solar out there too. Um, we, uh, we've been working with a motel or hotel out there, I guess. Motel, motel.
Hotel.
I get them mixed up. Um, uh, that's it. It talks, it's, it's been a, I keep on it, you know, I'm really pushing that. We need that, uh, uh, there too. So, um, hopefully we can get some fruit on that. Um, let's see here.
Can I, can I just say something for the group just for clarification?
Yeah.
Just because this can be a little misleading. Um, it's important to note that, uh, this section here, uh, that's more in the bolder colors, not as washed out. It's tough. I don't, I don't necessarily love the colors of this, but this is the business park as it stands right now. Everything north of this line, uh, of the data line and everything east of, uh, this solid line here is, is referred to as phase two and three. Once the business park proper, which is sort of this 50 acres ish, um, gets filled up, we can start maybe talking to the county about purchasing some of this land and incorporating that part of the business park. But right now, what's sort of under the VDA's sort of, um, uh, purview in working in relationship with the, with the county is just this, this first 50 acres that you see developed. And, um, uh, with shovel ready sites and things like that.
Yeah. And we're kind of the first point of contact on this in a way, I guess you would say. And if you have questions, please ask, stop me. Um, I want to be, you know, I want your time is important. I don't want to hang on, hang you out here, but I want you to know if, if you need some. Okay. So, so the business park, uh, we've got a couple, three things working out there. I'm pushing hard to try to get something going. It's, it's, it's not, it's coming, you know, it's coming. Um, uh, then we've got, uh, okay, and more land? Okay. The lots over by the vet center and animal tracks. I think there's three and one there, four left there. Um, we did fill the lots. Uh, Chad Olson, uh, is building those, uh, storage sheds. That's a wonderful, what a great use there. And I want to thank the city for their leadership on that too. Because we were able to, um, kind of help them to get that in there. And John Ennis just south of there, uh, Ag Express, he bought part of that. And then Chad bought the rest and that's going to be developed. That was a very, um, challenging spot next to that grain bin. Uh, so other than that, uh, we've got out on railroad. Uh, we have a couple of things working on, uh, we had Shade Haven out there. And, uh, so Reed, we, we were able to help, uh, with that a little bit. Uh, VDA, uh, did some, uh, stuff for Reed there. We actually helped him with some soil cons, uh, you know, corrections and, and we're able to, uh, put a little into that, uh, to help him get that project going. Um, and I think he's pretty well set there. He's built out and ready, done. Um, south of that, we do have a couple. I have had two inquiries in the last three weeks on, uh, parcels there, which is exciting. And then, uh, you're working with someone too, Nate, that we were just talking about. So there will be, I think, a couple more things happening on that parcel, uh, in the next year or so. Uh, other than that, we've got the Hanson Farm. Right? We got Arena, Arena Drive. Um, there's 10, I think there's total within progress, 10 duplexes now.
Yep.
I called and checked it.
Yep.
Joey said they, they had, they had, so that's really exciting. And those are, those are just like bam, 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 you know, they're filmed. So, uh, there's that, the Hanson Farm, um, that's been phenomenal. We've had a lot of really good, uh, things come of that. We've got, uh, someone looking at, I think we got, um, did we say commitments? We have commitments, commitments on 12 duplexes on the backside. We have another seven duplexes and 10 townhouses from a separate developer. We have, uh, commitments, uh, in process on four apartment buildings, smaller apartment buildings, five, five. Uh, and then we have a, uh, some architectural design work being done on a couple of commercial lots out on the highway. So that's really great. I mean, that was really, and I, I, I want to thank everybody for helping with that. That was a really, that was the right thing to do, the right time we had to do that. And I think by working together on that, um, that was, uh, a really good thing for the city and for everybody to get that, uh, moving forward. Um, let's see here. Yeah, I talked about railroad. I talked about Hanson Farm, out on Arena, the business park. Um, so yeah, it's been, it's been a busy time. This has been the busiest two years. I, I've been on this committee a long time. It's been the busiest two years I've ever seen. So I think people want to come here. I think people are excited to come to Verona and you know, uh, I was talking to Joey this morning and he said, all them duplexes that he's rented, you know, out there on Arena. Every single one of them was a, somebody that had came from out of the area and moved to Verona from another, you know, and that's exciting. That means we're, we're doing something right. We're growing and does anybody have any questions?
I guess being the success or whatever needs to be accounted for. How does the VDA get funded? I mean, what?
Okay. So what we do is we buy a parcel of land, say, um, and then when we sell those parcels, uh, that money comes back to us and we, we're funded that way. Um, if, uh, we try to, we try to, if we have extra funds, we can use them funds, those funds to, uh, you know, I mentioned, we, we did some for, uh, we did some things for Reed over there. Uh, we were involved in the North Point deal, uh, and that was, that was a hard one. And you were on county, you know, at the, you were, yeah, that was right in the, thank you. I remember that day and then that we, we, uh, we, VDA did pledge some money towards the phase one environmental to try to help that deal move forward. And I thought it was a good use of the funds, um, because it was such a huge deal for the town, the county, everybody, um, trying to think of other, Whiskopop, we helped them out with the bottling plant. Um, so, uh, yeah, that's kind of how we raise funds. We raise funds off the sale of land. We're not really in the real estate business. We don't want to be in the real estate business and, and we don't, um, but on the same token, we have to have land available and we have to have it. And, and one thing I've learned over the years is you can have all the land available. If you don't have water and sewer and a plan and a TIF and all that stuff with it, it just doesn't work. You know, and, and we sat on that railroad avenue land for a long time over there and it just, nothing really happened on it. And then all of a sudden, well, we got the water and the sewer and then some things happened and, and there's other, there's other towns and stuff out there trying, they're, they're doing whatever they can do. I mean, they're out there pounding on trying to get these people to come to their town, pay the taxes there and hire their people. So we just have to keep at it and try to do that. And, and, um, you know, so it's, it's, uh, um, that's how we, how we do it.
And I don't mean to go too back in history, but just for my, I mean, so 40 years, the VDA's been in.
Forty.
And it initially started with a combination of gentlemen in the area that said, we need to create this. And somebody had to put the money in to buy the first land that started the process. I've just, as a full history, and if you don't have it, that's fine.
No, it was Jim Hofelder, Jim DeLapp, uh, Bill Moffett. Yeah. Me and Tom Weston are old enough. We, we remember. But, uh, yeah, and I, if I not, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was either State Bank or First National helped out with that. And we did it. And when we did the Tohman Tool Building, that's been 20, it was 25 years ago. We built that incubator building and we split it. And then we, you know, we just like, we had to get something going, you know, and, and, and we did that.
You guys were involved, if I remember correctly, on the food enterprise center project, I think Jeff Hopey was we were. In that. And so when NCR left and, and so over the course of time, there's been a lot of big.
There were some challenges on that, you know, and NCR and we did that whole takeover thing. That's a big building, you know, it's just a lot. And, uh, we helped out the first year or two, they were, were struggling with, you know, getting everything to meet the, and we did call, uh, put some money into that, uh, as needed, you know, and, and that. So, um, you know, it's, yeah. So to answer your question, you know, it's, it's, um, we need to, right now, we don't have any money. But, uh, it's not our money, but you know, um, we, uh, we, we, we put that money back into the Hanson Farm. And I mean, you were involved in that and, and, you know, it, it is what it is. So for the next few years, we're not going to be able to do any of these things. It's just as simple as that. And, and, uh, I'm not, uh, you know, if somebody needs help, I'm going to have to come to this meeting and, and, and beg for, because we don't have it. So, um, I, I wasn't trying to, no, I appreciate you asking. That's how we make money. That's what we do. Hey, maybe we'll sell some land. You know, I'm going to keep trying to sell some land, you know, and, and we're working on some of that stuff. So, yeah, but it's been good. And I think by doing that, it's funny because I talk about, uh, a friend I went to high school with mayor down in Richland County. And every time I see him, he's like, what are you guys doing up there? I'm like, we're just that good. No, I just, but, but, but you know, um, we, I think we've got a good formula and I explained that to other towns where I said, you know, having someone to just that first response to get with them, get them excited. And you don't just show them the land. You take them down to Drilus Cafe and say, this is a great place to eat or, you know, and I just use that as an example, but you know, it's, it's part of, it's a whole deal, you know? So, yeah. Anybody else got any questions about what we're out there doing in your name? No?
Well, thank you, Spain.
Thanks a lot. I appreciate the time. I'm going to get out of here.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. We will move on to item number seven, which is discussion with possible action on temporary class B beer license for Wild West Days. Hispanic Bull Riding Group on September 20th and 21st of 2024.
Okay. This one came directly to you guys because we didn't have a, um, public safety meeting in the timeframe when I received this on the 26th of August. And I see that their event is September 20th and 21st. Um, so I did contact John and, and explain to him the timeframe on this. So he suggested sending it directly to you guys since it is the Wild West Days. It's basically, I don't know if they've ever had this event before. Um, but it's basically the same, same token that they'd be using on the grounds as all the other events that they've had in the, in the recent past here. So, um, hoping that you guys will forgive the fact that it didn't go committee to here, but.
Well, and I, and, and we do have a process in place and I, this, I think between Lori and I, this one kind of frustrates us because it, it did come in so last minute. And then they're asking for exceptions to go around the normal procedure and come right to council. And I just, I think it's important that we don't make a habit out of that. Um, and that, you know, because we've done it twice now, right? And the first time we were just like, hmm, I'm doing it again. Not the same group, mind you. It was two different groups, not the same group. So I just, I just want to point that out because, um, folks some will sometimes come in and get at Lori about that because timelines are timelines. And then there's, they're like, well, we need to work around this and they just want shortcuts. And I just, I want us to just be cautious about offering too many shortcuts and going around the, the standard path.
Is there a reason why it came in so late?
I can speak to that because my neighbor asked Danny for that, who was on the Wild West Days Committee, called me and said, they had an opportunity to come up for a new event that they'd never done before. Acknowledged that it was short timelines, apologized and said, what process do I move forward with? And I said, first thing you do is call Lori tomorrow morning. I think it was a Sunday when he called me. And I think he did. First he texted me, said I'd called Lori and, and we're working through the process. So in this particular, I think the last one was somebody had just forgotten or chosen not to, whatever the case may be. And I think this one, an opportunity was presented. And they, they were hoping to be able to move it along quickly enough to, to make the event happen. Cause having an event in town is certainly a positive, but I wholeheartedly respect Nate's position on that. But I think that's why this one came the way it did.
The, the part that I have a frustration on, and I want it noted, is that when I do tell them the process and then they say, well, I'm just going to contact the mayor. That makes me a little upset. So that's why I was trying to bring it forward, but I wanted you guys to be aware that that is the stuff that I have to deal with when this kind of stuff happens. So.
I thought he called me before he called you.
That is incorrect.
Unfortunately, some of it is in the manner in which things happen at the front desk. That also is just in some ways, like why are we making accommodations for these things? And so you can read through the lines on that. But again, I, I, I don't want to stand in the way. I think the mayor's right. If it's a good event, um, and they're trying something new, it's fine. It's just that, again, I think folks need to know that if you, you gotta follow the timeline, then these, uh, you know, selling liquor is not a, hey, click, just give me an approval sort of thing. It has to go through the steps and, and I just want to.
Uh, could this event go on without selling liquor or boot or beer or wine?
I believe any event can go on without selling alcohol.
I would guess that it's remove some of their profitability to relate with the event. It's normal.
Yeah.
Involved with Wild West Days.
I, I would, my, I wanted it to be noted, but my recommendation would be to approve this because, um, that Wild West Days, uh, the more action they can generate on that piece of property out there, the better. And the, you know, when it comes to a first event, making sure that people are enjoying themselves, which often has times to have, being able to grab a drink is, I think is an important thing. So again, I just want to be noted to state that like, this is what happened and that. Like.
I also think it helps that it's being requested by a group that has previously handled this scenario in the past. So it's not a one-off that somebody's just trying to sneak in. It's my thoughts.
I was just asking the question.
Other questions if anyone looks for motion?
It's, yeah, and I'll move way past it.
I don't second it.
Got a motion to second. Any other discussion? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Host? All right. Moving on to number eight, review bids and approve resolution issuing $115,000 general obligation promissory note, series 2024B.
All right. Um, Sean Lynch from Ellers is with us as always to sort of walk through, um, the documents. Uh, I think Lori did send these out to council as soon as they came in today around two o'clock, Lori, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
I'm going to go ahead and put them up on screen here. Sean, can you hear us? Okay.
I can, Nate. Can you guys hear me? All right?
Yep, you're coming through. Great. Um, the, uh, issue B should be up on screen right now. If you want to go ahead and just let me know how you'd like to take a walk through it.
Yeah. If we could go to the last two pages, so, uh, page three, and then we'll go on to page four after that. Perfect. Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. What you see on the screen right now is what we call the bid tabulation. And you'll recall from past meetings, we had a discussion about financing a list of the city's capital projects for 2024. And after some refinement, the final number that we settled in on, uh, through the council's review of this was 115,000 to be paid it back over, uh, 10 years. And as you'll see in a second, some of it over five years and some of it over, uh, 10 years. But given the, the size of the issue and, and historically, uh, there's been strong interest from the local institutions. We thought we would put it out, uh, for bid. As you can see on the bid tabulation, uh, we did get quite a bit of interest. And you'll see this too, on the second issue that we'll go over in a minute. Both, uh, issues garnered a lot of interest. We ended up getting, uh, four bids, which, uh, were fairly tight in terms of the interest rate ranging from 4.79% out to 5% for the 10-year repayment of the issue. And with this issue, the city would have the ability to prepay, uh, should you so choose at any time. Uh, Royal Bank had that best bid at 4.79%. And Nate, with that, if you can go to the, the next exhibit. So as we talked about previously with the council and we discussed a couple of different ways this can be done. The council settled in on trying to be as specific as we can to the useful life of the assets that the city is financing. And to that extent, about, uh, five or 58,000 of the 115,000 is paid, uh, back over 10 years commensurate with projects that we think have a useful life, uh, of a 10-year period or, or longer. And then the other 57,000 of the total 115,000 is geared toward projects with a shorter useful life. And so we have that paid back over the first five years of this tenure issue. So it's all combined into a single issue. It's one promissory note issue. Uh, but you can see we'll be making a little bit larger payments in the first five years and smaller payments at that 4.79% interest rate uh, through 2034. Uh, and as I'd mentioned, uh, should the circumstances change, either interest rates go down or the city has extra funds that they want to apply to pay debt off early, uh, that option will be available to the city as we go through future years, uh, in terms of, uh, paying this issue back. So what would be needed this evening, uh, by the council is approval of this bid with Royal Bank. And then we will work with city staff and Royal Bank on completing the, what are called the Wisconsin Bankers Association forms, uh, to, uh, solidify leading up to the closing date, which is, uh, toward the end of the month, September 24th. Uh, and we'll finalize, uh, and have the funds available to the city at that point. But before any action, if the council, mayor have any questions or Nate or Lori have anything to add, uh, please do so.
Thanks, Sean. Questions?
I guess this is me being new, just commenting again. Where do those payments or a note like this come from? Is it something that gets budgeted in every year? Is there a fund that handles all loan payments? Or I'm just out of curiosity how? It's one thing.
You want to critique stuff about?
Payments.
We have, we have two parts to a levy. We have our regular operating levy and then we have a debt service levy.
Okay.
So this would be part of a debt service levy. We would levy for the payment for that particular year, along with all the other projects that we have levies.
Yeah, they're, they're all part of the same fund. Um, and I don't necessarily want to get into fund balance accounting and things like that, but, um, they are, this would be out of the debt service fund next year. Yeah. Um, and so this is, uh, for capital projects. Again, this was just a, I think there was a squad car and half a chassis that we were paying for through this note after all was said and done. And usually we do these at the, at the end of the year, but since we had this other issuance, which is the 24C that will be up next, we decided to just, um, uh, for efficiency and convenience, just let's do them both at the same time. So.
So he mentioned if there was a change in interest rate, would that go down according to prime or does that get rebid? Or how does that work?
Sean, did you want to maybe talk about, uh, what Ellers does with, um, refinancing opportunities?
Yeah. So the, the, uh, agreement with the bank states that at the city's option, if lower interest rates were available, uh, you could approach them and say, we're going to pay you guys off because now we have a new loan, let's say at three and a half percent that we can issue to pay you guys off. And then we're only paying three and a half percent interest rather than the 4.79%. So the point I was, uh, making was that the interest rate, which I think is very reflective of what we're seeing on a 10-year bank financing like this. So it's certainly, all the bids were very, very good bids. Uh, if it's a big if, but if lower interest rates were available in the future, you as a council would have that option. And typically as Nate said, what we do as your municipal financial advisor is we're in contact regularly with Nate and with Lori to say, well, we're seeing interest rates that are lower than some of the debt that you and the city has outstanding. And we'll run what we call a refunding analysis to determine whether they can, you could achieve savings by paying off the old issue and issuing new debt, uh, to do so, and then lower the, the annual debt service payment. So in during the life of this issue, I'm sure we'll be sending emails to Lori and Nate as we monitor where the market's at. And if, if there seems to be a good op, opportunity, then potentially this issue could get refinanced in the future. Interest rates stay at there where they're at or go higher, you're locked in to these. you're locked in to these interest rates for the full 10 years. And you'll just continue to pay this issue off, uh, as it's currently set up.
Thank you.
And we, uh, for those of you who were with us in twenty twenty one, we, you know, interest rates really came down in twenty twenty one post, you know, and that was immediate years when COVID started. And we refunded, oh, it had to be like three or four different issuances at a much lower rate. And I think we realized savings of somewhere between a hundred and ninety and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the course of all those. So there is, it has happened before and it has happened recently. Whether or not we're going to see stuff like that again is, is, is the question, but that's like Sean said, that's part of what they do as our advisors. They keep, keep a surprise of one opportunities to refinance are available.
Thank you. Other questions? Now we'd be looking for a motion.
Okay, this is Crystal and I would um, approve the resolution issuing, uh, fifteen hundred and fifteen thousand general obligation promissory notes, series twenty twenty four B to, uh, Royal Bank. Is that okay? All right.
It's Todd, I'll second it.
Got a motion a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Cindy?
Hi.
John?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Seth?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Pat Kirkie?
Aye.
Todd Spade?
Aye.
All right, move on to item number nine, review bids and approve resolution issuing five hundred and eighty thousand dollars and taxable general obligation promissory note, series two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty four C.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thanks, Nate. I've seen it's up on the screen now. Uh, as the council recalled, the second issue, and this ties in real well with your previous speaker, is, uh, Vida currently owns property in tax increment district number seven, which, uh, they originally purchased in conjunction with, uh, what the city was hoping to see done in order to gain control of the property, but the intent was not to have be to hold the property, uh, forever going forward. And so what this note does is it provides funding to purchase the property from Vida. And it does so with a three-year period, uh, where there's, uh, maybe going to that third or fourth exhibit, Nate might be the best one on this one. I kind of show this. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Uh, the note has a maturity date of September first, two thousand and twenty seven, and the full amount of the principal and interest is due at that time. What we think is much more likely is the city will finalize arrangements with developers to secure the property for their particular project and development in tax increment district number seven. And at that time, proceeds from that sale will be used to pay this issue off. And we expect that that will happen sometime between now and two thousand twenty seven. So as, uh, as with the initial issue that we discussed this evening, this issue also can be prepaid at the city's option. Should those, uh, dollars come in from a sale of the property in the future? In, in a case or a scenario where the city does not sell the property, the intention would be at some later date to extend that balloon payment over a longer term, uh, depending on what activity we expect to happen with the property. But in the interim, uh, this will allow the city to purchase the property from, from, uh, Vida. Uh, there'll be annual interest payments in two thousand twenty five and twenty six that need to be paid, uh, as Lori talked about with the debt service fund. The one other element that's a little unique with this issue, well, two other elements that are a little unique with this issue is compared to the first issue. Number one is instead of the debt levy that the city does for your general fund budget each year paying for this issue. The expectation is the interest payments will be coming from tax increment district number seven. So it's a special taxing district which is used to promote development and redevelopment in the city. Uh, and then the other part, uh, just as a reminder for the council, you'll notice in the title of this issue, it's taxable general obligation promissory notes. And as I'd previously explained, the reason this issue is taxable versus the more normal tax exempt financing for governmental purpose projects like equipment, streets, um, facilities, uh, city facilities. If the city's intention is to acquire and own property for the purposes, not of creating, say, a park or for right of way for a street or something like that, but for the pro purpose of promoting redevelopment or development in the community and, and likely resulting in the sale of that property to someone who's gonna do a development or redevelopment. The IRS requires that any borrowing related for that be done on a taxable basis, uh, rather than a tax exempt. And so Nate, if you could go back to page three, we, we sent this out to the same list of bidders, ended up actually getting five bids on this. But the council probably noticed that in, instead of the four point seven nine percent, this interest rate is higher. And the reason for that, the winning bid having a higher interest rate than the four point seven nine, even though it's over a shorter term than the first issue, is that the purchaser can't write the interest payments that you pay to them each year, uh, for the, for they're lending you the money. Normally they don't have to pay interest taxes, uh, excuse me, taxes on those interest payments. But because this is a taxable issue, not a tax exempt, they do have to pay tax on those interest payments. And thus the interest rate they charge can't benefit from that tax exemption and be lower. Uh, it's, it's typically higher. And you can see with the bids today, uh, the winning bid, again, from Royal Bank in this case, had a five point seven nine, but the, the, uh, spread, the other bidders, I think the, the highest bid was at seven percent and uh, I can share with you, it's, it's not unusual on a taxable issue like this to see interest rates that are at least a percent above tax exempt rates. And you can certainly see that that's the case here with the, over the five bids. Uh, but again, this will provide the financing for the initial acquisition of the property, which we expect to see development and sale of that property down the road. This will allow you to purchase the property, uh, later this month and own it, get it off of Vida's balance sheet. And we would recommend, as we did with the first uh, issue this evening, that you do accept the proposal from Royal Bank. And we'll proceed with city staff and finalizing the documents, uh, for a closing on September twenty fourth.
Thanks, Sean. Questions? Now we'd be looking for a motion.
So Cindy, I'll make a bid that we approve the resolution issuing five hundred and eighty thousand dollars taxable general obligation promissory note. Series twenty twenty four C to Royal Bank.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
This is Crystal. I'll second.
All right, motion a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
John?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Seth?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Pat Kirkie?
Aye.
Todd Spade?
Aye.
And Cindy?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Sean.
Yep. Thanks, Mayor and Council. Have a good rest of the evening.
You too. Move on to item number 10, which is review and approval of comprehensive plan request for proposals.
All right. Uh, so this, uh, RFP came forward, uh, in an earlier draft at the end of last month's council. Um, we had a conversation, uh, with this group about, uh, feedback. We also discussed some of the feedback we had received from department heads and, uh, plan commission. I went ahead and, um, took a shot at integrating those into, uh, the draft and that draft was sent out, uh, on Friday of last week per your review. Uh, hopefully everybody had a chance to skim through it. I know it is fifteen, um, pages long. Um, I did send out, uh, the back half of it, uh, to George with basically questions of like, how much of this is needed now versus later? Typically, the way we've done RFPs is we've articulated out what we want. Once we've gotten, uh, made our selection with a consultant or an engineer or an architect or whatever the RFP was for, we work with them on crafting the contract language. It's somewhat unusual, at least in the time that I've been here, that we've said this is what the contract language will be. And so, um, that was just borrowed from Onalaska and some of the other RFPs that we reviewed that probably have a more robust team, uh, that puts out these RFPs and things like that. So we'll work with him on that component. And so I don't necessarily think that this group, unless you really, really have something in that section you want to talk about, really needs to spend a ton of time on that portion. I have not heard back from George yet. But I would say if we are ready to move forward and approve that, it would be contingent on him sort of uh, integrating his recommendations on, on that. Um, other than that, I did leave the items, um, in red that were the changes from the draft that you saw last. So, um, that way you could see them. Uh, I don't think I had any particular questions or other items that I really wanted to have a discussion piece about tonight. I think, um, again, the, the additions that were made generally reflect what the feedback I got from this group at the last meeting were, Trina, I don't know if you felt the same way after receiving the draft.
I'm, I'm really good with this too. It's a nice job.
Um, I, we, again, we were, some of the feedback we especially got at Plan Commission was very specific about meetings that they wanted set up and people were talked to. And rather than spell that out in the RFP process, we'll leave that up to, um, I just kind of said, be aware. So for instance, the Vernon County Energy District, um, there was a comment made at Plan Commission, like you must meet with the Vernon County Energy District. It's like, well, be aware that the Vernon County Energy District exists and that they probably have strategies and other materials that you should be cognizant of as you go through this process. So I thought that was sufficient enough. Um, and I did integrate all the recommendations Kurt had had as well. And so, uh, I, I would say, I think if this is ready to head out, I think we're ready to cast our line and, and see who pops up. Um, we would do our best to submit this, that it's always one of those questions like, how do you make people aware that this exists? Um, is there a message board or some other, um, platform you can get it on? And we always try to put it on our website, put it out on Facebook and things like that. Um, we'll share it with people we know who do this sort of work. Um, we'll probably send it to Kurt and say, hey, you know, you've taken your hat out of the ring for this, but can you help us disseminate? Things like that. So I know that's always a question about how we get this out.
Thanks, Nate. Questions? Now I think we're looking for a motion to go ahead and approve this.
Again, that would be contingent on George or Stephanie, one of the city attorneys, uh, sort of giving their approval. And if there's, I will say, if there's really substantial changes where it's like, oh, they want some new language in, not just language taken out. So I would say this, if they say, I mean, before anybody makes motion, if they say that whole last section here just does not need to be there because it is stuff that will be sussed out when we select somebody and then start talking contract, because again, this group will have to vote again to actually accept a contract from whoever we choose. If we, if we were to say, if George comes in and says, or Stephanie says, section four here just can be cut altogether. My understanding is that this group would be okay with them making that cut. But if they were to add something substantive in there, I would bring it back for another round with this group, right? Just because we want to make sure that's okay with them. And so.
Thank you.
This is Todd. I'll make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan request for proposals, uh, contingent upon Hopkins and Hopkins' final approval.
Cindy, I'll second.
Got a motion a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Trina and Nate for all the work they've done on this. It's been quite a few months. Hard work.
Trina did a great job on this, put like, getting us to a, a really a solid foundation in that. This is, this was a, this was a tough one. I, I don't think.
Very tricky.
I must really appreciate it, uh, doing this one, but we're glad it's here. And again, while it's probably not perfect, it's good that we just need to cast our line. It's, it's never going to be perfect, but we just we got to get active.
Thank you, Cindy.
All right, we've got a motion in a second, I think, right? Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Host. All right. Thank you, everybody. Moving along to item number 11, discussion with possible action on Chosen Valley testing soil boring proposal for the new salt shed.
Okay, um, this is a continuation of our endeavor to get a salt shed by next year. Um, unfortunately, our target of getting this year is not going to be seen. Um, but what we did find out was we were looking at the soil borings from North Point and realized that there, there was one soil boring where we would like to locate the shed. Uh, and it showed that there was a decent amount of fill material that was placed there. And so we did also see it on the north point, like the North Point property on the north side. Um, it also showed fill material. So it's likely that's what's there, but just because we've had a literally one soil boring in that site, we felt like it was warranted to do three more. And it's not a large site. Um, so that's a good number. So if you would scroll down there, Nate, that's exactly what this is for. We've used in Chosen Valley many times. Um, I know we've had some challenges with soil brains lately. They are, that's the nature of soil brains. They're imperfect, right? They're taking samples in a big area. Um, but we've had a lot of success with Chosen Valley. They've always been very efficient and economical. Um, so if you just go, I think it's just a little bit further down, it summarizes, there's three soil borings and the mobilization and the fee. Yeah, right there. Yeah. So as it mentions there, it's exactly what I just said, that's the soil borings mobilization and their cost is twenty nine seventy, which is a very normal cost for soil brain. So, uh, it got approved at Public Works and we'd like to move forward with this. Give us a better idea of what we're up against.
So ju- just to add at Public Works,
Oh.
Uh, not the same company that did the soil boarding, it's on the fire station. So that was a question that came up. Very different company. And as Sarah said, she's worked with Chosen Valley for years and have been
Plus.
Have been reliable and always, uh, well priced, I think is.
They always give us the best deal.
Yep. And then, um, two is that, uh, the money for this has been budgeted for as part of the project and, um, has the money's on hand as part of the borrowing at this time. So.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you. Questions? Now we look for a motion.
This is Crystal. I'll move that we, um, approve Chosen Valley testing soil boring, um, for the new salt shed. Is that all?
This is John. I'll second.
About the total?
For two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars, you want to add to that?
Yes, thank you.
John, you're okay with that second?
Yep.
All right. Got a motion a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Crystal?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Seth?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Pat Kirkie?
Aye.
Todd Spade?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to item number 12 now, which is an ordinance repealing chapter two point zero six of the Baroqua Municipal Code confirming discontinuation of Hidden Valley's municipal court participation in sending cases to the Vernon County Circuit Court. And this will be the first reading.
You want me to try it? Uh, so this is a continuation of the conversations that we've been having all, uh, all, uh, year. Um, we received, uh, the last time we were at the council, the council authorized, uh, George Hopkins to submit a letter to the district court administrator, um, to basically articulate our position of that we were in, uh, with not having a licensed attorney judge. Um, that was, uh, willing to run to be the judge. And so we had an empty bench at municipal court. Um, and there was very few prospects of us getting a licensed attorney who met the qualifications, but also lived within one of the four municipalities, right? And also that letter articulated what we wanted to do, which was to leave uh, our, the municipal court and have all of our uh, citations and whatnot heard over at circuit court. Um, he did that after you approved it. The judges got back to him, Lori and I, and I forgot who else were on, uh, some people from Cashin were on a meeting. were on a meeting or late last week or Wednesday of last week, and the judges who were got the letter said, we agree with you. You can leave. And we also, they also said Cashin, Lafarge and Westby can go do their own thing. So basically, what we've been looking for all year is permission to do something, right? Because we've been operating in the gray area. So that's all good. And basically, the aftermath of that is for us to have this ordinance in front of you that basically sets us on a path to transition out of the out of the out of the municipal court. So it rescinds our our ordinance that establishes municipal court and then sets us on a path to go to Circuit Court. We had a meeting today with the Circuit Court Clerk, I believe, is who that was.
We did not have a meeting with the Circuit Court Clerk today.
Who did we have?
Oh, that was with the, yeah, right. I forgot. I was thinking of the other meeting, but yeah, we had, we, we met with her, the clerk of court.
The clerk, sorry.
Yes, over there, Sheila. She came in and, and to help with the transition and whatnot. So.
So as you can see here, just to point out that there's an effective date of September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. That's the end of this month, obviously. There's a reason for that because we need to get out so that the other three entities can sort of recertify a new court with new rules and then have that available so that people can take out papers to be on the ballot for, this is where Lori needs to jump in. Thank you.
Each of the other municipalities have to file their own ordinance for a new court. They need to do that in October because in, so that they can get that all finalized because in November, then it sets the path to a non-attorney judge. That is what they want to do. For people to take out papers and get signatures in December because they have to have a special election for April. So there's a lot that they have to do in a short amount of time. By us leaving now, it gives them the time to get that in place.
And, and everything else about our conversation today with regard to the turnover to Circuit Court went very well. I think we're all feeling very confident. I know Chief Needfeld, I asked him the question like, hey, is there any concerns you have? Because really that impacts what he does a lot. And I think he was very comfortable with it. And I think ultimately, we're in a good position here to move forward. But if you're wondering why that timeline escalated, because I know we've talked about November thirtieth a little bit as well as is when the temporary judge's time is done. This has escalated even faster, but I think we're, we're prepared for it. The biggest thing I have to do is, is we need to find a a new prosecutor. Because right now we have a temporary prosecutor for municipal court, but we need to establish our prosecutor who will handle stuff at Circuit Court. I said that correctly.
I'm just going to ask a question. Does this set us, so like, say, five years down the road, our population increases, maybe there's some attorneys that move to town or folks that would be could be reestablished in municipal court?
I think you can establish a municipal court at any time.
Okay.
It's just the.
Just curious.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think before municipal court started, we were at probably at Circuit Court. And so it's, it's just a matter of of we need to have a licensed attorney in our area that can serve as it. And I think Chief Needfeld, you know, we had a conversation, I think he said it before, it's like when municipal courts are well-run and you have a judge or a plethora of options for judge, they're really good ideas. We're just in a situation where we don't have those things. And so we felt like we had no recourse. And this is a decision the whole group made, no recourse but to go in this direction.
Sure, I understand that. I guess I just didn't know like how we could go back down that road if we need to. Like, how do we know if we're going to have prospects to be judges? You know, I guess that was my only.
Sure.
It would come up like it did before.
How? Like, how did it come up before? I have no idea.
Right. I think the police chief, well, there's two of you in here that can probably answer that. I think it started under Mark Rar. I think it was the decision of the police chief that it was in the best interest of the community to have municipal court. So therefore it began. And I think due to whatever issues could arise in the future, that I would maybe think Chief Needfeld or if the council or that somebody felt the need for that to happen again, we certainly could do that. And at that point, it could be structured. However, the council at that time feels it should be structured. Right? Like, right. If in 10 years, the council feels that a non-attorney judge would be the right thing to do when they want to form a court and whatever, then you have that option. But I think right now, I, this, I believe this is the right.
I don't disagree. I was just.
Sure.
Yep. Yeah. To, real quick to your question. See, part of the reason that we felt like we had no option going forward is because George and Stephanie have access to a lot of information that sort of shows who's a licensed attorney in the area. And they put out a bunch of feelers, say like, oh, who do we have over here? Who do they have? So we could also leverage our city attorney and the listserv that they have access to. I think there's some database of licensed attorneys and if they see all of a sudden, hey, there's like 12 operating in the area, then our chances obviously become much different than what they are now.
And one of the bigger problems is that a lot of the attorneys that are in the area don't live within the city boundaries. And that's one of the biggest hurdles.
Or are serving as, you know, as, as city attorneys themselves and therefore run in the public of interest. So like
Again, hoping not to go too deep backwards. How did it get that Cashin, Viola and Lafarge used our, do we know why they were combined in our municipal court?
It's Cashin, West, Cashin, Westby, Lafarge and Broke.
Oh, okay.
And at one point Stoddard was in it and at one point Coon, wasn't Coon Valley?
Valley was in it at one point.
So they just had the option to join and use it.
There was probably, I mean, John, I don't know if you remember, was there an early, like a, a origin group that sort of decided like, three of us are going to come together and we're going to create this?
Rick, do you know the histories?
This came about after I retired, so I wasn't in the.
So it was during Darren, was it? Oh, March.
Me being the new curiosity.
The, what I was advised actually from Mark is all the municipalities in the Vernon Counties, all the chiefs got together and says, this is something we want to do because they were kind of having problem, problems with the district attorney office not doing some of their ordinances. So then they started that. And then I got a little bit more legs with Cashin and I want to say there is some wasn't wasn't Sparta, but there was another one that was talking in Monroe County, but Cashin's the only one that actually jumped on board. So it just started with enforcing the ordinances and trying to do something different and actually saving the citizens money. It was actually big. And then yeah, also you actually, when it's run right, you, more money comes back to the municipalities.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions?
The only thing I would say is if, if people are comfortable with it, I would recommend that we move this forward as stated here and waive the second reading if possible. Just for timing purposes.
Cindy, I'll make a motion. We approve the ordinance repealing chapter two point zero six of the Baroque Municipal Code confirming discontinuation of Hidden Valley's Municipal Court and waive the second reading.
Stoddard, I'll second it.
All right. Got a motion a second. Any other discussion? Is voice vote okay, Lori, or do you want to do? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Posed. All right. Item number thirteen, payment of the bills.
The only change that I was going to point out on this was that in the additional bills on the very last page, Kale had told me that Riverdale football right in there is now two hundred dollars, but he actually added another fifty dollars in there. So it is actually two hundred and fifty dollars because they are going to have an additional group go, I believe. So that was one change that was was brought up since that was sent out.
Cindy, I make a motion. We pay the bills.
Got it. I'll say it. Got a motion a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve?
Hi.
Seth?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Matt Kirke?
Hi.
Ted Space?
Hi.
Cindy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And Crystal?
Hi.
All right. That will do second period of public comment. We don't have anybody in house, anybody online wish to make a public comment? Hearing none, I take a motion to adjourn.
Steve, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Got a motion a second. All those in favor?